Madam Chair, we're going to split it into two items, that which we can talk about in a public session and then that which we need in a private session for basically wages and benefits.
And that will both form the local agreement?
Yes.
What is the topic that's going to be open session?
The topic in open session is dealing with an action on our permit window relative to coronavirus. The action for closed session, as I mentioned, is wages and benefits as it relates to employees and how we may have to address the coronavirus.
Okay, thank you. So do we have a motion to add that to the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion, Adams, second, Riley, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Edwards, you have to wait till your name is called.
Yes.
Director Adams?
Yes.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Edwards?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yes.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Potter?
Allen.
unanimous approval. Next, we have oral communications. Anyone wishing to address the board on matters that are subject to the board, please step up, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Mina Beatty. Calum is requesting approval to deploy AMI smart water meters and infrastructure throughout their district. I oppose this, and I have provided evidence to you, to the board, in the past on the many problems with smart meters, smart water meters and electric and gas meters. The public also did not receive a notice of this in their, in the proposal, it wasn't in their bills, and it wasn't in the newspaper. I'm disabled by electromagnetic sensitivity, these meters have impacted my life terribly, and so I know from personal experience and not of others. I applied for party status in this rate case in February, I discovered that Monterey County's water management district supports AMI, and did so in a previous rate case, despite the information I provided. And I found testimony by General Manager Stoltz on February 27th, when he went in the testimony, what is MPWMD's opinion about Calum's advanced metering infrastructure proposal? MPWMD supports AMI as proposed. We participated in one of Calum's AMI pilot programs and actively supported a similar request in the 2016 general rate case, and I want to know when the board approved this position. I went through the agendas from May of 2015 through May of, uh, to February 2020 before the last rate case. I did not find any publicly noticed, agendized meetings where the board discussed the issues, heard from the public, approved direction for staff, received documents, or heard updates on the general rate progress. I couldn't find any mention at all. The district is a party in the CPUC proceeding, and the district is governed by the board. Is the board approving the physicians' testimony, protests, comments on proposed decisions and settlements agreements by the general manager and attorneys? If so, when did this happen during the past five years? And when did the board approve AMI? This is an urgent matter that the board must take up. The public has been blindsided by this. This is a very urgent health and safety issue. The meters were installed in my house several years ago, I protested, they only removed them from my house, and now I'm getting impact from the meters wherever I go, here, in my neighborhood. This must be dealt by the board. This is an environmental and health issue. The leak adjustment, the leaks appeared in this district when AMR, the previous generation, were installed. I have provided the letter that I protested, the device letter, Calum's device letter, several years ago, I previously provided it to the district, as well as a newspaper article from that time. This is a very, very serious issue, it's costing rate payers already millions and millions of dollars, and I asked the district board to take it, take, to deal with this. Thank you.
Thank you. You can pass those around.
Lady Fisher, so several months ago, Mr. Stolt issued a report on the water supply and demand in Monterey County. Now, unlike many, I thought it was valuable.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll start over. Several months ago, Mr. Stolt issued a report on the water supply and demand in Monterey County. Unlike many, I was, I thought it was a valuable start to a discussion on what our current needs are, and what our long-term needs are likely to be. In your package tonight, you have letters from Mr. Uslar of Monterey and Captain Wiley of the Naval Support Activity Monterey. They detail the requirements of base amount of water that may be needed for our military facilities in the future, and we also have some requirements in the letters about some much-needed affordable housing in Monterey. Now, based on mission and defense needs, DLI and MPS would have to ramp up fairly quickly. Their needs can go up and down fairly, fairly rapidly, and in a national, time of national need, I don't think you want to get into a debate about how much water they would need. I believe adding the military's needs to our water forecast is the easy part, though. The hard part of what seems to be happening right now is we seem to be in a permanent holding pattern. So Calum still wants to build a desal plant, though the regional need seems to have declined significantly. Public water now feels that the expansion of pure water Monterey would take care of the needs for the remaining future. The ag community seems to be saying that pure water Monterey cannot use the water because it is, that they have claim to it, even though they haven't used it for the 30 years it's been available. And this agency, the business community in some cities, dispute what the actual needs are. So I think that since other cities do want to add, add housing but can't because of lack of water, or State Water Resources Control Board condition to, this is all in your letter packet, and all kinds of other reasons, we need to do something. But the biggest thing we need to do is get past the CDO restrictions. I don't think anybody's going to argue with that. I don't think anybody believes that having a state controlling our water supply is, is a good thing. And it seems that the argument, current arguments, aren't getting us anywhere. So I'm wondering if it isn't possible for this agency and the interest of parties to ask the governor or somebody to start some mandatory mediation on all these issues, to try to get people to actually work it out, and determine which way we should go and say, okay, this is it, you guys just fall in line. I just don't think we can go along with the flow of the way we have it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Peter Kaiser, Seaside. I'm also against the deployment of the smart meters. I believe I even put a note into my meter, water meter box, no smart meter to be deployed here, you have to talk to me, I don't want one there, I don't have an electrical smart meter, I have an analog. Guess how much that cost me from PG&E, and I'm a fourth-generation stockholder, $430 to not get a smart meter. So watch out for the CPUC if you don't want something. Be very careful, could cost you 500 bucks. So we don't want the mini cell towers. In fact, I even called about the smart meters that they were going to be deploying, and I asked the company that was supposed to be setting it up, how far does the radiation go from that smart meter? And they said they didn't know. They didn't know how far the radiation was going to be going from that smart meter, which is in my front lawn, about 30 feet from my house. So I didn't appreciate that. So let's not have them, and we should have hearings and all these things, and it should be an opt-in. In other words, if someone wants one, they have to ask for one, not the reverse of the other one, where they just practically put one in for PG&E. One lady thought they weren't going to have, put one in, and they put one in anyway. So be careful about that, please. Also, previously, I came here and I asked that you take the mud out of the Los Padres Dam, and I understand that there was, there is, it's being studied. I have been mentioning this, I believe, for decades. What are we waiting for? If we get the dam back, we're going to have a lot of acre feet back, sell that valuable soil, and expedite that study. Let's have that study done maybe by, by August, and then expedite the implementation of getting that dam back. We've lost the San Clemente, Los Padres is all we had. Apparently, there was a vote years ago to participate in the Salinas Valley dams, and the people voted against it, so I wasn't here. So let's get that dam back, and also the holding ponds, please. Let's set those up. We had, we're having huge rains this week, most of it's going right into the ocean. If we had the holding ponds on Fort Ord, we'd have a lot of acre feet ready, and I don't know why these aren't happening. Let's also return the gray water to each of our homes so we can do the landscaping. My understanding is potable water use is maybe less than 10%. Landscaping and all that stuff, non-potable use is, is the majority of the water. So let's get the water back to the homes so we can use landscaping, and so we won't have the need for an expensive 1, 1.2 billion dollar desal plant, or whatever. So please expedite the Los Padres and these other water-saving items that have been mentioned for a long times, but there's no new holding ponds, there's no mud out of the dam. Let's, let's get with this, please, and have, let's have these accomplished, let's say, by December. Bulldozers can make holding ponds and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the, the oral communications. Just maybe a future agenda, we should look at the smart meter issue.
Yeah, I think District Council has a memo on that that we can resurrect.
Okay. Consent calendar, does anyone wish to pull something off the consent agenda?
I have a couple questions, but maybe ask you.
Dr. Molly, yes, I would.
What item?
I would like to pull item number three and item number six.
Okay, do we have anyone else wishing to pull an item?
Those were the same three I was thinking about, so I'm good.
Okay, anybody from the public?
No, just three, number three and number six.
Okay, do we have a motion on the remaining consent agenda? Number three.
Second.
We have a motion, Adams, second, Riley, roll call.
Director Evans?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Yes.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Edwards?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yes.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Potter?
Hi.
All right, that leaves, oh, that leaves item three and six. Item number three, consider expenditure of budgeted funds for analysis of the Tulare Citos groundwater basin.
Is there a particular question?
Molly, that was your question?
Yes, yes, I'm, I'm, I know, so that I, I just wanted to discuss it amongst the board, I know it's through AgCon, but I don't know that it went through the rest of the board, that the, that it is outside of the district boundary, and that I wanted to just open that up for a second. I'm not opposed to the finishing the study, but I just wanted people to be aware of that fact.
Good.
Yeah, so this has come up with respect also to a later item on the agenda. Yes, the Tulare Citos area is Chapinus Creek, which is kind of north of the watershed that flows into the, I guess it flows into the, the river north of, so below Los Padres Dam, but north of the old San Clemente site. The idea is that this is a, it's a, it's a louvium, so it would function as a storage One of the concepts is to inject water and then just release it to the creek, either for environmental releases to increase flows, especially if in the future there is no Los Padres Dam to regulate flows, or to use the creek and the river to eventually pull it out down at a production well further south. Obviously, there'd be some losses.
So the main issue is that it's outside our territory?
Yeah, and this has become, well, you know, pure water Monterey is outside our service territory, there, there are investments we've made outside the service territory, or the district boundary. Question's always been, is it consistent with district policy, practice? In this case, developmental water supply, environmental flows for the mitigation program, we viewed it to be consistent. The water right itself, there's about 18,000 acre feet remaining, and we've talked about how we preserve some of our interest in that water right. This is one of the few options for storage that, that we could come up with.
So do we need approval for, from the county, or?
We've started, we were directed during administrative committee to talk to the county, so we've started those discussions.
Okay.
Their first verbal reaction was, have at it, we've got no interest here.
Okay.
But, you know, we are talking to County Water Resources Agency about the activities.
Great. Molly, does that answer your question?
Yes, it absolutely does, and there are no further questions, I would move the board aside.
I have, I have a question, Director Byrne?
Yes? Director Hoffman?
Yes. Where is the area located exactly? And my concern is that if there's no infrastructure, that Calum currently exists, then what benefit if you inject the water, if there's no infrastructure, to practice and distribute it?
Correct. And there's no infrastructure in place to actually get the water to the location. So this would be specked out as, it, could water be stored in this location? And then to actually make it a project, you would be looking at design of either rannie infiltration basin or new wells, running a pipeline up the valley to the region, and then we'd have to additionally study whether using Chapinus Creek as the delivery method makes sense, or if the losses would be too great, and that you'd want to pipe it back down.
So the first step really is to determine if we can salvage the water rights that we have, and is this a possibility? And then the project would be based on the answer to that.
Exactly, and so this is, in effect, qualifying the geology to see if it's even a viable storage spot.
Does that answer your question, Director Hoffman?
Well, I have additional facts located with you here.
Okay.
So if there's no infrastructure, why aren't we looking at areas where infrastructure currently exists, and not go to areas where no infrastructure and the viability of such a project is minimal? And therefore, going somewhere elsewhere is more centralized, similar to where the existing ASR is located.
Yeah, if you, we are. So if you look at what we're doing, there's four areas of investigation right now. We've already contacted the State Board about the water right, about licensing A and C, which are currently used for aquifer storage and recovery, the first four wells. Then, we've identified potential additional well sites in the, in the seaside basin, so that's item number two, is, you know, additional wells in that same region. Item three is we're looking at a point of diversion all the way down at the Cod wastewater site, to potentially augment the Pebble Beach Reclamation Project with raw river water blended with the reclaimed water from the facility. And then item four is we would also be looking at the potential for wheeling and transfer of water outside the district, possibly to Marina Coast Water District, to offset their sigma issues. And that concept would be, they would invest in the infrastructure, we would have to work with California American to see if the, the Monterey Pipeline would have additional capacity outside the needs of the Monterey Peninsula, that they could be paid for wheeling, and then we would be paid for water on a wholesale basis. That fourth one's going to have a little bit of challenges to it, because there's a, just kind of a natural adverse reaction to moving water from the Carmel River out of the basin and out of the district. Nevertheless, regionally, it would be a helpful potential future.
So each of those four are only a portion of the 18,000 water rights?
Right.
Not the total. So we're looking at a conglomerate of how to use the 18,000 acre feet of, of water rights?
And we may not even get to the 18,000, it, it could be 8,000 or 10,000, but we want to at least have ideas that work well enough that we can make the case for an extension of time to consider perfecting that right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions on number three?
I had one.
Yes.
My question is, who owns the property that we'll be looking at?
Yeah, it's currently under private ownership and pasture land, so, and it's a variety of different owners, but we would have to work with the property owners. Yep.
Any other questions on item three? Do we have a motion to approve?
I second the motion. No, I think Molly made the motion, but it was never seconded.
That's right, Molly, Evans?
I need the approval.
Yeah, motion by Evans, second by Riley.
I'll speak on the second.
All those, oh, roll call.
Yeah, I'll speak on the second.
I'm sorry, what?
He even wanted to speak on the motion.
Yeah, I'll speak on the second, just sit right there.
Yes, yes, Director, uh...
Okay, thank you. I'm going to approve this one, I got a problem with the other one that's coming out being outside the district. Since this started in 2012, I want to make sure we finish it up, and it's only 27,000, that's a lot of money, too, but I, I have a problem with, with spending money outside the district on projects. But this one just started in 2012, I want to make sure it gets carried on, we're trying to hold on to it for a bit.
Okay.
I want to hope for approval.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote.
Director Evans?
I approve.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yes.
Director Hoffman?
No.
Director Adams?
Yes.
Director Potter?
Hi.
Motion passes six to one. Item number six, I think, Director Evans, that was yours also?
Yes, Director Byrne, thank you. So the staff note, the committee stated that the, 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 if you deny it, there's no action, I believe it's because there was, were, there was no action, the case for proposals had not been fully brought before the board, or before the committee. So I wanted to, I wanted to discuss that and also understand where the cost estimate, or where the cost is going to come from in the budget.
Great, and I think it would be more appropriate to say, the administrative committee did not review the item, it was just informed of the item, and the need for conferring with legal counsel over what the recommended approach should be. So, and we set that meeting for the next day. And then we did meet and considered the differences. Was there a question there, other than where the money's going to come from, or? I kind of missed the, if, if there was a specific question? That, that was a question, yeah. So we actually authorized in December 1.2 million on additional work, and included in that rather lofty budget was 450,000 for sequo work. We felt that it was too high, but that was...
Correct, but, but, Dave, my question is, and the staff note, it says this was not budgeted, and that's why I'm...
Oh. Correct. Because this is in the current fiscal year, that entire authorized 1.2 million, which now actually will be substantially less, was not in the budget, so it will come from reserves, and it's now, it will be in the budget if you adopt the mid-year budget under item 14. Oh, no, 12.
Any further questions?
I do, I have one question.
Director Riley?
Dave, the LAFCO jurisdiction, as I understand it, and I may have... I do, I have one question.
Director Riley?
Dave, the LAFCO jurisdiction, as I understand it, and I may have an erroneous understanding, is boundaries and then service levels or a service component. Will this include both categories?
Mm-hmm. So the second one that you're referring to is, it's called activating a latent...
Power.
Power, thank you. And so legislatively, legislatively, we have the power to deliver retail water service, but because we haven't, on a grand scale, sold water, on a minor scale we have, we've been wholesaling, and we've been delivering and selling reclaimed water. We've met with LAFCO, they haven't said that that history isn't enough that we wouldn't have to go through the activation of the latent power, but their suggestion is that we would. So, yeah, it's a minor boundary adjustment for the Yankee Point and Hidden Hills area, and then this activation of the latent power, which will be part and parcel to the SEQA consultant's review of the acquisition itself. So we need to have SEQA done for the, for LAFCO to act on both of these.
If I may, SEQA doesn't apply to the approvals, SEQA applies to the project. So we have to examine the entirety of the project, you can't piecemeal a project. And the project in this case would be the acquisition of Cal-Am and the provision of service and the change to boundary. So that's, that in the largest sense is the project, and then the individual actions need to take into consideration the SEQA analysis that was done for the project.
And the assumptions are, going into this process with LAFCO, does not propose any physical changes or capital improvements to the current system? So there's no change, it's just kind of a transition from A to B. And the second issue is, there's no time proposing expanded operations. So technically, it's not a change in operations, it's just a change in ownership of operations, or the jurisdiction for it.
If I may, but there may be some change because with the, with the change to service of the areas outside the district, that there could be increased carbon emissions, there could be other impacts. Also, there could be a, an impact in terms of the amount of water consumed under the new management, and those could have environmental effects. Whether those need to be analyzed to the level of detail in an EIR is a question, but since this is a highly contentious matter, we can anticipate that there might be a challenge. And the full EIR is the most ironclad path to follow to rebuff a challenge. Any other process under SEQA is more subject to a challenge that could delay the process and perhaps even be more expensive.
And I was more interested in trying to understand LAFCO as opposed to understand the future.
Yeah, and so, as Dave pointed out, LAFCO just needs us to have completed SEQA before they'll take an action. And the eminent domain attorneys have said, hey, a simple change in ownership really is not a project, and so that's very easy to do. In one case, it was raised that, hey, wait, if you're promising that you're going to reduce costs and reduce rates, rate reduction might result in an increase in water demand, so we have to analyze that. It may be less than significant, but it needs to be analyzed. So, we didn't bring that up in the scope of services, but one of our respondents knew about it and brought that up. And then the other area is, because this is not just a simple change in ownership for the entirety, as Dave Laredo pointed out, there's these satellite systems, there could be duplication of fleet miles, vehicle miles, and those kind of things. So it just has to be analyzed, it may ultimately prove to be, that you could have done a mitigated negative deck and gotten it, gotten through with it, but...
Risky.
The more extensive rigorous proposal of this consultant was really because of their experience in the litigation of these kind of things, not what you can get away with as a SEQA document.
Thank you.
Any other questions on item six? Do we have a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, Riley, second Adams, roll call vote. Director Byrne? Yes.
Director Adams?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director Edwards?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yes.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Potter?
I...
Motion passes seven oh. All right, we're at the general managers' report.
And Sarah will turn the monitors on. Great. Thank you. Oh. There we go, we're back. This is through February, and what we've been noting is, it's been a really odd year. So we had no rain in October, and no rain in, basically, in all of February. And so we're seeing some fluctuation in our monthly, monthly end numbers that are really a result of that. So turning to the first chart, compliance with both the cease and desist order and Laguna Seca adjudication. Last month, we were actually out of line with the target by 72 acre feet. Now we're within target by 102 acre feet, so we've brought everything back in under the targeted budget. On the next chart, you can see that Table 13 has not changed, and that's because it's all storm dependent, and there was no storm in February. But San City D-Sell produced 27 acre feet, which is almost capacity during the month of February. And Mr. Lear has pointed out that that's really because the aquifer's been flushed with the rains that we did have earlier in the year. And so the brackish nature of the source water doesn't lead to a violation of their discharge permit, so they're able to operate. Water demand through five months were about 117 acre feet over last year, which does raise some concern. We were, at the end of last month, 43 acre feet over, but this is exactly what we saw in October with no rainfall, people irrigated more. Now, with no rainfall in February, even though it's not a real irrigation season, people were irrigating more without the rain. We're also kind of not half jokingly keeping track of the current months because more hand washing is taking place, and we don't think it's, it's going to be a very perceptible impact, but, you know, when you, when your average is 57 gallons per capita per day, and you really go whole hog on washing your hands, it can go up, you know, several gallons per person per day. So just something that we'll be eyeing. Rainfall here, you can see in the blue bars, there was no blue bar in February. And what that does, we were at 103% of long-term average at the end of January, and now we're at 74%. So just one month can drop you down. Of any of the years that started this way through February, they had no rain in February, I think there were like 11 of them in the record, some small number, none of them ended up normal. So we're pretty much on a path to below normal, dry or critically dry. Rainfall totals, I just wanted to highlight that through yesterday in March, you can see the uptick of the little red line, so we gained another about a third of an inch, which, if you go back to the last chart, March is typically about three and a half inches or three and a quarter. So with only two weeks left in March, even with rain on the horizon, we've got four days next week at about a 50% chance, it's unlikely that we'll get back to a normal March. And stream flow, same thing, without rain, you don't get as much unimpaired flow. And so we went from 103% of long-term average at the end of last month to 65%. So these are the things we'll be watching. Basically, drought is two years in a row at dry or critically dry, measured by unimpaired stream flow. We do tend to look at rainfall as well, but unimpaired stream flow is it. So if we end up, you know, it'll be the first of a potential drought year, but we always look to two in a row before we declare drought. And then finally, nothing to report on the chart, but we are pleased to report that we're starting up ASR again due to the rains that we just had. And we might be able to get six or seven more days of storage out of that, so.
How many days were you not pumping?
Oh, it's been since mid-January, January 26th, I think it was.
Okay.
Yeah, about the 20th something of January.
So what's the total?
To date, we're at a little over 420, about 420 acre feet. So it's a below-average year.
So, and the projected was like 1,300?
We carry 1,300 as an average. The faceplate capacity is about 1,900, 1,920. Because of some of the issues of just maximizing the water right, which we didn't do a really good job of last year, and we're going to continue to mess with, you still need a really good winter, really wet winter to come even close to our water right. But on the averages, 1,300's fairly predictable in the long run. The goal, of course, is to get out from under the CDO so you can accumulate water in the ground. So when you have a 400-year, we're currently sitting on over 2,000 acre feet of injected water in the ASR field that we haven't used. So it's acting a little bit more like a reservoir right now. So in a 420 acre foot year, which may end up at 500, we don't know where we're going to end up, you could pull 800 out of that 2,000 and still be at 1,300. And that's the way it's supposed to work, it's the lake behind the dam theory. And that concludes my report on the compliance with respect to the next item, which is just an update. There's really been no change. You've seen the Coastal Commission timeline on considering the coastal development permit for D-Sell. So D-Sell cannot move forward until the commission sets a date for a hearing and takes action. On Pure Water Monterey, we began injections February 19th. We're now, we've now shown that we can inject in the deep wells, that we got them all talking to each other, the electronic systems. So we've put water in the Back Flush Basin, which I showed you at the last meeting with Director Edwards, photo of his hand in there. The shallow wells, what's called Vado Zone wells, are proving out. We do have one Vado Zone well that's not performing as well as the other one, so we're going to bring the geologists back and figure out if that's a long-term problem or a short-term problem. And then both deep wells prove that they can inject quite a bit. Still running at about two-thirds of total capacity with Pure Water Monterey because we're still kind of in the breaking in range. But all in all, that project's proving out. And then the report on Santa Margarita improvements in aquifer storage and recovery is in item 18 in your packet, which is at line one, page 139. And that's it. Nothing else to report.
Thank you. Move on to directors' reports. Anybody have a good to report?
No.
Seeing none, we'll move to public...
Yes.
Director Byrne, actually, I wanted to make a report on July.
All right. Director Evans?
I wanted to, thank you, I wanted to talk about our trip to DC for the Aqua Conference. I found that to be an extremely valuable trip. I got a lot out of the conference in finding out what was happening at the federal level for water projects in California. Even if they don't have to affect us directly, just went on to the water project, but it was still very interesting to learn and hear ideas. And it's very interesting to find that there's a clear push for municipal waters at the federal level, and I just found it to be a fantastic learning experience.
Thank you. Director Adams?
Thank you. I wanted to comment on the same trip and just completely concur with Director Evans on the value of the, of the meeting, the conference particularly, although I must say that I really...
I think it's not on there.
One of the things that I really enjoyed and was really pleased with was the opportunity to meet, not just with Congressman Panetta, but with Senator Feinstein's chief aide. And the fact that he knew so much about us and seemed very appreciative of the work that we do was really, you know, very fulfilling. So I was really thankful that we had the opportunity to do that. And the collegiality with the other board members is also very, very valued. Thank you.
Well, and I think it was a great conference, it was a great attendance by our board, and I think one of the great comments that was made at the end was, decisions are made by those that show up. And I think it's important that we show up.
And only three of us brought back cold, and two of the folks from Monterey One Water brought back a cold, so...
Right.
Yeah.
Did our fair share.
Yeah.
All right. Move on to public hearings. Item number 12, consider adoption of fiscal year, mid-year budget adjustment.
Before you begin, for the directors who are on the phone, are all of you now capable of seeing what's being broadcast?
Yeah, no, it's Molly. I can see the broadcast, but it's about five minutes behind. In fact, very, Director Adams is TV right now on the live broadcast.
Okay. What are you seeing?
Current sound.
Must just be distance.
It's probably distance or the speed of the connection.
Speed of the connection, yeah. Well, our apologies, we'll have to work some of these things out. The, you know, even with the governor's executive order, you have to still provide a physical place that's accessible for the parties, public parties, to view the presentations and listen to the teleconferencing. And then we have to assign a staffer, so this is it here today, but if we'd done the same, like in the lobby or at some other building, we'd just be assigning somebody to be in a room with a bunch of people, that's just not this room. But this is going to be a problem if we've got a delay in PowerPoint or in the telephone itself. So we'll kind of work on it during the week and see what we can find out.
I think that's going to be a problem countywide.
Yeah.
I expect it's going to be a problem with the county, the board supervisors, and all of the other meetings that we all have.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think we'd like to get a feedback from the directors that are offside to see if everybody's getting the delay, or is it just a few directors?
Yeah.
Good evening, directors, members of the board. This is the mid-year budget presentation. My staff note, which starts on page 81, is the detailed recap and staff observations, and also the reasoning behind the adjustments for some of the line items. So I noted all of that in detail there, but I'll go through the slides here briefly and try and sum it all up as to why the mid-year budget was needed and how much was needed. So we start off by showing the revenue summary for the original 2019-2020 budget. It started off with a little over $18 million in revenue sides, and we were anticipating using some reserves with the original budget. There was some carryover fund balance as well. If you'll see, the fund balance was, carryover was, I can't read my own...
2.314.
2.314, thank you. And so there's two components to it. One of them is the carryover, which is basically projects that were slated for a particular fiscal year but doesn't get done, we just moved the projects into that next fiscal year, the funding for that. And then what's the use of reserve funds, basically, that's the deficit between what the expenditure is and what's actually needed to get from the reserves to complete the revenue cycle. On the expenditure side, we had about 50% in project expenses. This was a heavy year for projects, and it even got much heavier with the mid-year budget adjustments, and I'll show those projects, what came online during the mid-year process. And then some of the other pieces you see there, basically, this is again the original budget for the 1920, just mirrored what was on the revenue side, the little over $18 million. We looked at our budget comparing to the year-to-date revenues for the first eight months through end of February, and it should say February 29th, not February 28th, it was a leap year. The revenues came in at about 48%, which is right about normal, what we see for the first mid, eight-month process. On the expenditure side, it was about 38% or... of six point seven million of the eighteen million dollars. And again, that's kind of like a normal pattern when we compare year to year. So this is what we had, the actuals through the, through the eight months. And then based on this data, we did the mid-year budget and we said what's going to be needed from March one through June thirtieth. And so that's what's slated in the, in the adjustments. So when we went through the budget cycle itself and determined what needed to be changed, there were some minor changes on the personal side. The salaries and wages budget, we had to reduce it by fifty thousand. And this is due to the departure of the IT manager, where we basically did not hire an IT manager. We decided to go outsource. But we had to take the money from the salaries line item and then move that to the consulting line item, and you'll see on the next slide. Again, reduction, some retirement cost. And then on the medical insurance, basically, reduction there, but then gets set aside on the medical insurance or retiree side because that's just a wash. So all in all, when we did the adjustments on the personal side, it was reducing the personal budget by fifty-five thousand. Then we went to the supplies and services side. That fifty-five thousand actually covered in those two line items, the facility maintenance and the IT service and supplies, the contract portion. And we also had to do some changes, the configuration changes when, when the IT manager left. So there were some physical building changes. There were some minor adjustments to the membership dues, professional fees and public outreach. So fifty-five thousand got saved on the revenue, on the personal side, but fifty-five thousand dollars got slated on the supplies and services side. So those two kind of like was a wash. There was no adjustments to our fixed assets in this cycle. Then we get into the heavy-hitting area, which is basically the project expenditures. These are all the adjustments that were done to the budget. Pure Water Monterey Operating Reserve, originally, we budgeted two million dollars. We need additional two hundred thousand dollars. And the reason for that is because of the cost of the water. Now we know what the cost of the water is going to be. So the banking of the thousand acre feet of water reserve, it's going to cost the district two point two million dollars. And so we've already budgeted two million dollars in the original budget. We need two hundred thousand from the mid-year budget. We are reducing the CalM D cell project financing cost, two hundred thousand. We are no longer going to be doing that project. CalM's going to use the SRF loan, and so they're not gonna do the public financing. Feasibility Study Measure J, this was the Phase Two. This was approved by the board in December of twenty nineteen. And the amount was one point two million dollars and some change, one point two five million dollars. We are budgeting eight hundred thousand dollars because we estimate that eight hundred thousand dollars is what's gonna be spent between now and June thirtieth. And then whatever the remainder is, is going to be from July first through the remainder when the study gets done. So we are putting in eight hundred thousand for that Phase Two, which was again authorized by the board in December of this year, or last year. Then we have the Aqua First Storage Recovery. This was the big project for us. We had budgeted originally about two point five million dollars for the project. When the bid opening got done back in October of twenty nineteen, the actual project came up to about total cost of five point six million dollars, which included construction management and all that, and contingencies as well. So we needed additional three point five, three point one million dollars. And we had mentioned in that staff note, when we brought it to the board, we said, with this authorization, we were going to be modifying the budget. And so that's what you see, the three point one million dollars here now on the mid-year budget. ASR operations, we looked at the operations for the Santa Margarita Phase One and also the Phase Two. There are some operating costs in there, like the PG&E cost has gone up. So we needed to up our mid-year budget by about hundred and fifty thousand. There's also a well rehabilitation project of hundred and twenty thousand, which was approved in tonight's agenda. That was about hundred and forty, so those two are two hundred and seventy thousand. Although those two projects, the two seventy is basically a reimbursement on the revenue side. So you'll see, when I show the revenue, you'll see that the revenue reimbursements does go up by two seventy. So to us, our net, that's actually a wash project. Pure Water Monterey, MPWSP, the operations model, there was fifty thousand dollars budgeted in model, work to be done. That's not gonna get done this fiscal year, so that's moved into next fiscal year. So we are taking it away from the mid-year budget. And then the water rights permits, there are going to be some added cost. John Lear and his group are starting to work on that permit process. And so there's that added ten thousand dollars. On this page, the total is about four point one million dollars. Here is over onto the next page. We looked at the fisheries program. We're not gonna run the facility this year, so there were some reductions there. The riparian erosion projects, again, we looked at the projects and there were some reductions there. San Carlos Restoration, we had set aside about thirty thousand dollars for the project. Being told that we were able to do what needed to be done to dress it up, all that, just for about under two thousand. And so we're reducing that by twenty-eight thousand. The hydrology program, there was a lot of line items there. I would have not put two hundred dollars in there, but there was about eight or ten line items that, when I netted it out, that came out to about reduction of two hundred dollars. So that, I had to show it there just so that it matches up with the total. And then there were some adjustments on the conservation program side. Basically, the division managers looked at them and said they were not gonna be able to do some programs this year, so they were removed from the budget. So all in all, the project side, which was the heavy-hitting area, came out to little over four million dollars. So we are adding four million dollars to our budget in the, for the, for the mid-year budget process. And twelve E, Exhibit Twelve E in the board packet itself, it details all of those individual projects, line items. And so you'll be able to see what all those individual projects are. So to summarize the expenditure side, we started with the original budget, little over eighteen million dollars. We reduced the personal side by fifty-five thousand. We added to the services and supply side by fifty-five thousand. We added the four million dollars to the project expenditures. And then there was some reserve in the original budget, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. We were generating additional reserve that was gonna be put aside for water supply projects and conservation funds. We're not gonna be able to set that money aside now because we've got a heavy project expenses. So that comes off from the original budget. So when you take into all those, the net to the amended budget is little, not little over, but it's twenty-one point seven million dollars. So then we move on to the revenue side to balance the budget. We again started with eighteen million dollars on the original budget. We looked at the capacity fee collections through February, and we anticipate that there's, there's gonna be about another hundred thousand collections between now and June thirtieth, although with COVID nineteen, that may change. But it's not a big-ticket item, so we added hundred thousand dollars to the revenue side. We looked at our interest earnings for the year through February, and we estimated based on the guaranteed investments that we have through CDs, we were gonna generate another fifty thousand. So that's a good number there. We adding fifty thousand to the revenue side. Here's the reimbursements. I was, I was talking about the project expenses side. This is the revenue coming in for that, so it's a wash to us. So when you add all those, you're still short by three point three million dollars. And so that's where the three point three million dollars is going to come from our reserves. And so keep in mind the three point three, three point three million dollars includes the three point one million dollars for the ASR facility, the eight hundred thousand dollars for the Measure J Phase Two study. And there were some other adjustments in there. So that's how we have to balance the budget or match the budget to the expenditure side by taking additional three point three million dollars from our reserves. So that makes the amended budget to twenty-one point seven million dollars. And here's the detail on the reserve itself. So our projected balance for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen was thirteen point nine million dollars. I've got bad eyesight. When we closed the books, when we did our financial statements, we actually delayed some projects from what was budgeted. So basically, our reserve balance did go up from thirteen point nine to a little over seventeen million dollars. And then you will see, there comes the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget line item. So we are putting away some money for the equipment reserve. This wasn't the original budget. We are putting aside some money for the pension reserve and OPEB reserve, those are the two hundred thousand dollars. And then the general operating reserve, this is where the three point three million dollars gets added to what was already in the original budget. And the original budget carried about oh five, four point some million dollar change. And so when you add those two numbers, the four million dollar change plus what was presented here tonight, the three point three million dollars, that gets to eight point one million dollars. So that's what we're gonna be pulling out of our reserve. So the estimated balance, when we close our fiscal year June thirtieth, twenty twenty, the estimated total reserve balance is gonna be little over nine million dollars. So still in good shape, but we drew a lot of reserve this year. And that's simply because we had about six million dollars alone, five point six million dollars in the ASR project, and then two million dollars in the Pure Water Monterey project. So that makes it about seven point six. Plus, we had a million dollars going out to Pebble Beach Reclamation Financing Project, but that's gonna come back. But again, it's going out right now. So seven point six plus another million. So about close to nine million dollars in projects this year. So it was a heavy-hit project year for us. So that's where it leaves us with the reserve balances. Now I'm highlighting it, a little behind. And then to summarize how the budget, adjusted budget looks like, district revenues, this is basically just our property tax, water supply, user fee. We did look at the user fee revenue. We do have a little surplus coming in right now through eight months. However, we did not wanna adjust the budget or the revenue for the user fee simply because we know COVID nineteen has hit. And so that's affecting the tourism sector. And so that will definitely draw the water consumption down, which will potentially bring our user fee down. So for the year, we think it will just come in right what we had originally budgeted. So that's what the district revenue line items are, reimbursement projects, two point one million dollars. Reserves, fund balances, that's what I showed on the previous chart, little over eight million dollars. So that makes it twenty-one million dollars on the expense side. Salaries and supplies, project expenses, you can see the total, the magnitude of the projects this year, it's fourteen point five million dollars. And then the others and reserves in there, so that's twenty-one point seven million dollars. And so just wanted to remind the board, I like to show this chart of the media budget, also the, the budget adoption as well. There are some districts, future obligations, commitments, what's outstanding on the horizon there. There's that water allocation process, which we think may cost somewhere around one point three. We have the Rabo Bank debt that will come to maturity in June of twenty twenty-three. That's about three point one million dollars. We have additional Pure Water Monterey water reserve of seven hundred and fifty acre feet. That's gonna come in future years. And so based on the calculation, that's gonna be about one point eight million dollars. And then, of course, we have the pension obligation and then the OPEB obligations. So all in all, we've got about fifteen million dollars or sixteen million dollars in our obligation commitments that, just wanted to throw it out there so that it's out in everybody's mind. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Does anyone on the board have questions? Director Adams?
I do have a question. And I, I see that the, the reserve that we will end with this year is about half of what it was last year. And I'm just wondering, as you look forward to the twenty twenty-one budget, what do you, do you have any kind of thought that you might be able to share with us that will?
Yeah, we're definitely not going to have this level of projects, what we had, all of our projects. The ASR is gonna be completed, the Pure Water Monterey project's now done. The only other one that's gonna be on the horizon now are some of those things that I showed, which is basically the additional reserves for the Pure Water Monterey, which is about two million dollars. The water allocation project, about one point two, one point three million dollars. Then I don't know if Dave wants to speak anything about the Pure Water, Pure Water Monterey Expansion Project, if that's any of the cost out there. So I don't see very many projects coming through, so we definitely should be able to bank some more money on the reserve side.
Thank you very much.
So the money for the Measure J is coming out of the reserves as well, is that true?
True.
So we can expect that to drop some more? Okay?
Correct.
Anyone else have questions?
I have a couple of questions. Could you go back to your last chart? Not that one, that one. When we get to the budget discussion, it would be helpful, following up on the chair comment and also Mary's comment. Some of these have a timeframe that they're expected to be completed. I'm not trying to get the timeframe committed. It's just that some are time-framed and some are not. And I assume that the pension and the OPD obligations are ongoing obligations. They just pay down whatever the future actuarial kind of estimates are. But you have a serious debt, I mean, a Rabo Bank debt, that's a specific item. The allocation process is also a process that takes some time, but that should have come to an end. All I'm suggesting is that when we get to the budget, it would be nice if you could put together kind of a little time sheet about how many years out, some of this, because we get an understanding of how important the reserve is, how we manage that, and it gets back to the continuation of the revenue sources. I mean, all those tie in together, I think.
That's a good point, we definitely put the timeline on that, yeah.
Any other director have a comment, a question? We'll open it up to the public.
Director Hoffman does?
Director Hoffman.
Director Hoffman does?
Yes, Director Hoffman.
First off, in looking at page eighty on Exhibit D, that document shows the annual budget for twenty nineteen to twenty twenty for project expenditures that we approved of eleven million, five hundred and fifty thousand. In item twelve, on page eighty-two, that number is different. It says that we adopted a budget of ten million, five hundred and fifty thousand. So which is the right number? What is the correct number we should be considering here?
I'm not finding the eleven.
I'm not finding the eleven.
So I, I follow what he's saying.
Where's the eleven million?
Oh, there it is, under project expenditures, twenty nineteen, twenty annual budget.
Right. So Director Hoffman, to answer your question, if you go to page eighty-two, you take the ten point five million dollars, plus you also take the reclamation project of a million dollars. That will make it to eleven point five five oh.
Got it. Thank you.
My second, my, my second question is, there's a request to increase of three point one five million for ASR sequence of still work. Do we have a schedule that indicates that that level of expenditure will occur between now and June thirtieth and that we will be required to make a payment to the contractors in that amount?
So I don't have a schedule with me, but I did speak with the project manager on that issue. And I am told that, yes, we will spend the, all of the cost in this fiscal year.
Or at least accrue it.
My third question, my third question relates to the two hundred and seventy thousand for ASR operations. Since ASR operations will be suspended during rehab, and the rehab is only a contract of a hundred and four thousand, and there's a reference to increased power cost, well, if the operations are curtailed as a result of the rehab, therefore, the power would not be utilized. I am at a loss to see where the two hundred and seventy thousand comes from.
So the power, we have spent little over what we have already budgeted for the eight months. So we are increasing that, and we are taking into account that the well rehabilitation will take the well offline for a bit. But we've taken all that into, into context, into account. And that's how we budgeted the, or that's how we came up with that hundred and fifty thousand additional needed for the power. Because right now, through the eight months, I believe, and I'm just going on top of my head, I believe we've already spent about close to hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in power.
And, excuse me, and we're trying to do the well rehabilitation while at the same time preserving the ability to do production from the other well. So there's still, it's not a complete shutdown of the ASR system.
My last question relates to page eighty-four. In the paragraph, although, in the paragraph, although the table, the reference states that the reserve balance of nine million, a hundred and sixteen thousand and change, says this amount, we see five percent of operating budget established by the board during oh five and oh six budget process. My understanding is that the amount must be fifty percent, not five percent. Did you clarify, please?
Yeah, it said- Yeah, it said minimum threshold of 5%, increasing up to 50%, but it always had a minimum of 5%.
And reserve policy, and reserve policy is a subject of the budget workshop that we will be having in May. So we get to look at this again.
All right, any other questions by directors? Was that a question? All right, we open it to the public. No comments from the public. Do we have a motion on this?
I'll move to approve the staff recommendation.
Okay, we've got a motion, Adams, and second by, I'm sorry, who? Was that a second by Potter?
Potter.
Okay, roll call vote. Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Evans?
Yeah.
Director Hoffman?
Yeah.
Director Potter? Approved 7-0. Move on to Item 13, Consider a Document of April Through June Quarterly Water Supply Strategy and Budget.
I'll take this one. Mr. Lear has, he moved from Santa Cruz to San Jose for kind of locate for his wife's job, and they left San Jose because of the number of coronavirus cases, and then they got sheltered in place today. So they decided to head to Santa Cruz, and then they got sheltered in place. So we're not sure what, when you'll see John give the presentations again, but for a while. So I'm going to do this. I'll probably mess it up. You've seen this, you see it four times a year, and so you recall that the quarterly water budgets are developed in accordance with the various state board orders, the seaside groundwater basin decision, and our District Rule 160 targets, which are established on an annual basis. We also have an ASR plan, which is based on expectations. Oh, there's the answer to the question, it was January 21st when we ceased injection and began again today. We also factor in Table 13, diversions. And now we've begun operating pure water Monterey. So we met with California American to talk about how we would best both budget for that as well as show it in some charts. We're assuming full utilization of all seaside basin native groundwater. The ASR injection in Table 13, diversions are little to minimum because of years with consistent similar rainfall. That if storms stop by early spring, we'll enter the low flow period. There's a low flow team that comes together and then starts to look at what kind of releases from Los Padres Dam and so forth need to happen. And the group got together on March 5th and included all of those parties. This is the National Weather Service's predictive tool for quarterly precipitation during that period. It's really kind of hard to see, but the orangish color is down in the low end of the bar at the bottom, which is, you know, on the order of 30 some odd to 40 some odd percent. So it's expected to be a lower than normal precipitation quarter. The targets to meet monthly demand, these are, again, monthly targets, and you can kind of see over time the cumulative, so the middle column is the monthly target. The final column is the year-to-date at the end of the month. And you can see that this is based on a 10,130 acre foot year, which is slightly higher than the last three-year average and five-year average, which is closer to 98 to 3. So looking at the quarterly budget off the Carmel River, it's all coming from the lower wells. You can see the three numbers there. And then the seaside groundwater basin, we will see an increased amount in May and June in order to offset having to overpump the river. And San City Desal is budgeted at 25, and as I said, they produced 27 last month. So if in fact the aquifer is back to where it needs to be, then we should be able to meet the 25 a month. On the usage side, as you start heading into summer with increased outdoor irrigation, you can see a slight uptick. But there, generally speaking, the total of the two top sources and the bottom uses line up. And so we propose that, oh, and this is the first time that you've not seen the Laguna Seca subarea with 000. We finally made that decision to just move on. So our recommendation is for you to adopt this proposed strategy and budget for the third quarter of the water year.
Any questions by the board?
I have just one question. Under the seaside groundwater basin and the pure water Monterey numbers, which are zero, that's because we're stockpiling the water?
Yes.
This shows up as a production charge?
Exactly. We don't anticipate serving pure water Monterey water for customer service, possibly in mid-June, but certainly at the beginning of July. So here we are in mid-March, and we've, we've produced about 280 acre feet, I think. Or no, we're on, we were on an injection rate that would be about 280 acre feet for a month. Where we really want to be is about 340. So as I mentioned earlier, we're not quite at capacity, but we need to build up 1,000 acre feet. So that's a minimum of three months of water the district's purchasing that's going into the reserve, not to customers.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other board members have questions?
Director Hoffman asked a question?
Director Hoffman?
On Page 99, Exhibit 13A, again, we're showing the projected harvest for fair chase insalination at 25 acre feet every month. What is the actual likelihood of production being at that level?
Yeah, recent history says there's zero likelihood. However, as I mentioned, our one-month most recent data point of 27 shows that...
Is it 27 or 37?
It was total of 37, but the end of last month had only been up at 10. So we produced 27 in the month. Yeah, it's a great question. The faceplate capacity of the plant is about 300 acre feet, which is why you see it at 25 a month. The actual production has averaged closer to 206,000, I'm sorry, 206 acre feet per year over the last five years. So it's, it's a great, it's a very good question.
So since the facility is not operating now because they can't, because of various issues regarding the water quality, why are we projecting 25 acre feet for a plant that there's really no expectation that it's going to achieve that?
Because it now is operating with the, the winter rains, got the brackish water TDS down to a level that they can now operate the plant and discharge under their discharge permit. So the, as I said, the most recent month showed that they can get 25. I think when the group gets in the room, they're always a little skeptical. But, you know, as I said, last month proved it out. Because these are such small numbers anyway, we're, the team is carrying it at that level. But your point is well made, it's taken with a grain of salt, isn't that just ironic? And to be honest, there are some other areas where we've got legacy numbers that we know probably bear some scrutiny. So even in like the annual budgeting for the non-Calum pumpers, we know that there's some things in there that, you know, the planting of grapes has gone up. The non-Calum pumpers number is probably higher, so we need to do some reassessment. At Director Brower's recommendation, maybe three, four years ago, we took a look at usable storage and said, is it really usable? If you're all the way down to the bottom of a well. So questions like these are worthwhile questions because at some point, we should probably make a decision, are we going to cut this here in this quarterly or not? And as I said, unfortunately or fortunately, we just had a month that supports this number, but we know that the recent history does not, so.
All right, any other questions? Move to the public, any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move motion.
Motion for motion, Director Evans?
I'll second.
I'm second, Director Edwards.
Okay, sorry, George, you got... So motion Evans, second Edwards, roll call vote. Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Evans?
Yeah.
Director Hoffman?
No.
Director Potter? Motion carries six to one. Next is action items, item number 14, Consider Approval of Grant Funding for Hastings Reserve Ford Replacement. I'm sorry, Hastings Reservation Ford Replacement.
And this is not a truck.
No, it's not a truck.
So this item has come before Water Supply Planning and Administrative Committee. This was brought before the Water Supply Planning even almost a year ago to talk about inclusion in the budget. And it's, basically, it was approved again by the Water Supply Planning Committee recently. Administrative Committee raised two important questions. One is, because its location is outside the district boundary, is it something that we should be doing? And two, because it's outside the district boundary, is there money available from the county or County Water Resources Agents? So we made a commitment to contact the county and look for money. I think the Director Adams staff was very valuable in that effort. There is no money. There are some grant programs, but they're really small dribs and drabs, and there's no money in them right now, and the timing is right to do this project. The outside the district boundary issue, we talked to, you know, dabbled at a little bit earlier in the conversation. The fish swim through our district. It's consistent with our mitigation program. The study that identified it and prioritized this as an obstruction to fish migration was a district-funded study and district-created priorities list. It's consistent with the district's mitigation program. And it was, the study was funded through the district's IRWM planning grant. So one could say it's very consistent with the district's mission, even though it's physically located outside the district. But I certainly don't take your rights away to determine what's appropriate and what's inappropriate. But it, it will allow it to be a leveraged project. UC Berkeley's only committing staff and time resources. The State Coastal Conservancy is pretty committed to fund the remaining balance, which is bigger than what the ask is of us. So with that, it's in front of you. I told everybody associated with it that they could stay away, but Thomas just couldn't. So he's here if you have any questions. If there's any significant questions, we can call the executive director of the reservation. She is available by phone.
Questions from the board?
No questions, the comment.
I have a few questions.
Director Evans?
Thank you. So in this staff note, it didn't say that the, well, one thing I could use was on the backside, Page 108 under staff, it said, well, this site is just outside the boundary. I think it was out, I believe it's 107 miles outside the boundary?
Yes.
Which is a little bit more than just in my... But that aside, in the paragraph on Page 107, where it's like, we went to Monterey County, it wasn't in your, in the lead that they went before the board supervisors to see? It just sounds like, you know, it was a phone call, we didn't have any money, no, we don't have any money, and we're done. So can you clarify what exactly took place in the conversation where they went back to the county for money?
Yeah, it's more like the latter, as you explained it. We had some direct conversations with some folks we know at the County Water Resources Agency, and then Beverly Chaney, who's kind of shepherding this project, worked with Sarah Hardgrave in Mary Adams' office, and then Sarah made inquiries within the county's system, which I can't speak to, but maybe Supervisor Adams could.
I should talk to the appropriate people to see whether there was an appetite or the, the money available to do it. And unfortunately, the response was, there really wasn't.
So I have a sort of follow-up to that, but does the county support the project?
Yes, the county supports the project, but the county did not have money to put into the project. This, this is tricky in so many ways, because as you had mentioned, the Coastal Conservancy, which, you know, does a lot of work with the county, is doing the balance of the funding, which is between $600,000 and $800,000. That money requires a match. And my understanding from, my understanding is that this is all from the settlement fund. And it's pretty difficult to get the matches to be able to spend this, you know, the money that is in that fund. So this seemed like a perfectly wonderful way of doing it, because I agree that the fish swim through our water too. And it does, you know, it does have an impact on us. So the simple fact that this is the kind of project that we have been doing regularly seems to make sense to me to go ahead and do this, because it does allow the use of that additional funding from, from the settlement fund. And I feel like what we're getting back for the $100,000 is really, you know, far more than, than the money that we're putting in, quite truthfully.
To me, it's money well spent in that if we look at some of the other projects we've done for $100,000 all over the peninsula, this actually directly benefits the river and the fish. And like you said...
Yes, point of order, point of order, are we asking questions or are we doing court discussion now?
Sorry about that. Do you have another question?
I do.
All right.
Is there a representative from the UC system there to answer questions?
No, she, we, out of the abundance of caution, we've encouraged the public not to attend today, despite the fact that we've had three members of the public attend. She is available by phone. If, if we have a question, we can reach her.
Do you have a question?
Unless, unless, yes, I have several questions, actually. So it's my understanding that the reason why UC system approached us was that they had difficulty accessing their property during high flow times. And so that's why they decided they needed to build a new bridge, is that correct?
That is not the way it was portrayed to any of the committees. It was that this is a fish passage barrier, that they proved that there was spawning upstream of this barrier during high flows, but stranding the fish during low flows. And fish...
My understanding...
That's different than what the person from Hastings told the committee a year ago, and that, that statement was made, that they had difficulty accessing their property
Oh, no doubt.
in high flows, and they needed to build a bridge.
Actually, I was at that committee meeting, and I don't remember that it was stated that way. I think that was an additional advantage of the Ford, was that they gave access during high flows, but the purpose of it was for the fish passing, fish passage. And I was at that also, so.
I think I was at the same meeting, and that's my recollection too.
Right.
There was a side benefit of access, but the dominant purpose is to maintain fish flow.
Any other questions?
Do you want me to call?
Yes, yes, I do. So the actual budget justification indicates that they're requesting $100,000 to engage an environmental consulting firm, and this contractor will perform necessary geotechnical, hydraulic, hydrologic analysis and generate a design for a new vehicle. and generate a design for a new vehicular bridge. Now, it also says, the contractor will be responsible for providing a sixty-five percent plan. So my question is, where is, is sequel work involved in this? And this has nothing to do with Ford removal, but to build a bridge. I can appreciate the need to remove the Ford, but you hire an environmental consultant to do design work? Where is the sequel associated with this? And where is the contribution from the UC system? And the cap, has UC system provided any funding, matching funding? So, do they prioritize this in their budget?
Just a minute.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, board members, this is Thomas, I'm filling in for Beverly Chaney. Based on the discussions that I've heard from the previous committee meetings, Jen Hunter was very clear that the UC system does not have funds for a project like this. What they can contribute is her time in helping shepherd the project along as far as coordination goes with consulting and permitting. It's my understanding that the estimate from Waterways Consulting for replacement of the Ford comes out to a total of about fifty-two thousand dollars. And that does not include the sequel work, sequel work and permitting. What we know from our own river projects is that in order to get the permits, you have to have the plans in hand with the hydraulic analysis and the surveying work done and a really solid design to proceed with the planning work and the sequel process. So, based on that fifty-two thousand dollars, the remaining funds that the district, if they chose to contribute, would be used for permitting this project. Permitting can be pretty extensive whenever you're dealing with a threatened species. And then any leftover money after that would contribute to the actual construction of the project. Tom Gansberry, with the coastal conservancy and conversations that I've had with him and then also with other members on the phone, such as Beverly Chaney and Jen Hunter, has basically said, you know, this is a rock solid project if there is a match, which they were hoping the district would, would contribute and that this project would proceed forward through their channels to get it built.
So I have a question on, will the conservancy fund the rest of the project in terms of the actual construction of it?
Yes, that, that would come from the coastal conservancy. And they have thrown out some fairly large numbers that they're comfortable with, which gave us a, a better sense of comfort of committing to something like this. They're, they're looking easily between five hundred thousand plus, so.
Any further questions?
Madam Chair, I did speak with Jen Hunter, the executive director with the UC system for this reserve. She said it started as a fish project and it's still a fish project, but the ancillary benefit of high storm flows access would be great, but they're not unduly restricted from getting to their property very often or for a lengthy duration.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I have comments when I get, get to that.
Any questions from the audience? Bring it back to the board. Director Riley?
Okay, thank you. I, this may be a little unfair, or it may be pie in the sky, it may be, either way. But I put this in a category of, of the district having gone down a certain road for a long period of time because of the CDO and getting off the river. And in order to accommodate getting off the river, you still, you now have a reduced, you have a new way of looking at the river and fish flows and the obligation of the district to provide kind of a healthy stream. I'm curious at some point, and it's come up before, not in any particular discussion, but I know it's come up before, about how much per fish are we spending on maintaining a mitigation program to serve a certain interest? Now, I'm not saying it's just a special interest, I'm also saying it's, it's an environmental interest too. And I'm just thinking, at some point, it's a little bit like this, the Los Padres Dam in my opinion. At some point, we're going to have to fish or cut bait, that's a heck, that's a bad way. We're going to have to somehow take a new look at how important this is in the larger picture. And maybe it's five years down the road, maybe it's ten years down the road, I don't see it this year. But I, I'm just thinking, if I live that long.
Yeah, no, it's part of the plan.
This is Director Edwards.
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, Director Edwards.
Yes, yes, I'd like to make a motion to deny this, I am, and I'll speak on the second if I get a second.
Do we have a motion?
Director Hoffman, second.
We have a motion and a second? Director Edwards?
Yes, I've made the motion, yes, on the second. I'm denying this because we have other issues we need to look at in the district at this time. We have the Orders 152 Committee, we have the ASR, the merchant bank loans, and the bank loan that we should be trying to figure out about how we should pay for. You, you've got citizens that want some money back if they can get it. And I don't think we need to go outside the district with a hundred thousand dollars at this time. So that's, that's what I'm, I'm fearing, and that's why I'm hopeful on this one.
Thank you. I would like to actually make the comment that if you look at the hundred thousand dollars here, there and everywhere that we have spent in the last, how many years? On community service, community outreach, rebates, this hundred thousand is probably less than significant compared to what the district has committed to in terms of conservation, fish, fish passage. And you would not want to know how much it is per fish. You would never want to do that calculation. But I support this funding, so I, I am against the motion.
Do you have a moment if I could comment?
Yes.
I want to clarify that I think the removal of Fords on the Carmel River are important. But, that being said, what we're looking to fund here is not removal of the Ford, we're looking at funding the building of a bridge. So if there was a way to limit the funding to the physical removal of the Ford itself and the sequel work associated with the actual Ford removal and not building UC system, a bridge, I'm on board with that. But the way it's structured currently of basically funding their bridge project and there's no reference is at this point, a Ford removal? I cannot support it in the, in the vague terms which is being presented at this time.
All right, any other comments? Yes, Director Potter?
Thank you, thank you. Do I go back on this just before I launch? Would you say that I could tag it out to St. Louis and get a salmon cheaper than I can get a, that's, and I'd put a lot cheaper than I can go ahead and get a fish out of that river? Why are you guys throwing all this money, or is this one of the highest, most productive habitat areas in the river system? And, and as UC said earlier, I think, you know, you made a very, very good point that this is not, this is not funding entire bridge, this is not building something for the UC system, this is, this is the habitat of the fish. So I'm going to, I'm going to hold hard to support our post, support approval of this action.
Could I make a substitute motion?
I think you're going to need to act on this one.
Because, let's, let's vote on this one. Roll call vote.
Director Byrne?
No.
Director Adams?
No.
Director Riley?
No.
Director Edwards?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yes.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Potter?
No.
Motion fails four to three. Do we have a, a?
A second motion.
A second motion?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to move to approve the grant funding for this fish passage barrier removal project at Hastings Reserve.
So, motion Adams, second Potter. Roll call vote.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director Edwards?
No.
Director Evans?
No.
Director Hoffman?
No.
Director Potter?
Yes.
Motion approved, four to three. We're on item number fifteen, consider adoption of resolution declaring week of March sixteenth through twenty-second to be fix a leak week.
Say that three times.
Yeah, quickly.
All right, I'll make this very quick.
There's a motion and a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What was that?
There's a motion and a second to approve.
Already.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion was Evans, second was who?
So, Evans was the second, I loved it so much that I would have approved it coming immediately.
So who made the motion?
I think I made it first, I think I made the motion.
So Potter, motion Evans, second. Roll call vote.
Anyone from the public?
Oh, anyone in the public want to speak to this, sorry, roll call vote.
Before you do, I just, the reason we move it to action item rather than consent is so that we can publicly announce to everyone that it's fix a leak week, the week of March sixteenth through the twenty-second. Come on down to the district and we've got little indicators that you can use to find the leak in your toilet and any other consulting you might want on how to fix a leak. So come on down and go ahead and take a vote.
I will announce that the moderate category supervisors can make a roll and put a comment. Oh, there we go. Okay, roll call vote.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director Edwards?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Yes.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Potter?
Motion, motion passes seven oh. That concludes our meeting.
No, we, we added.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're adjourned.
So, well, we have, we've got one public item and then we adjourned. So, the public discussion is, and this is probably important to get it out to our customers as well. We have a public permit window for your water permits as well as getting conservation supplies. We're going to close that window and that activity to the public. So we're encouraging the public, after just encouraging them to come down for fix a leak week, we're going to discourage them after tomorrow from coming down for permit processes. Yeah. And this is consistent with what a number of the cities have done for their public service elements, where staff are still in the building, but they've closed, for example, a building permit window.
So two things I would like to say, and that is, we are able to do some permits online. So electronic permit applications can occur, although they may not be able to cover everything at this time. And it depends on what happens with the county. If the county shuts down, we work with each of the departments. So if we don't have our partners to work with, then we're not going to be able to do certain things. We just mentioned fix a leak week, we have these leak detector tablets and some other devices. If anybody wants one and we're not open to the public, they can email conserve@mpwmd.net. And that gives an email to my department, we can send you something in the mail. We'd be happy to do that, and if possible, we'll find a way to arrange to get these to you, so that's.
But actually permitting over the counter will cease as of tomorrow.
Well, what day do you want to start? So the city of Carmel.
I think it depends on what happens with everything else, it's so dynamic right now that.
Yeah, effective tomorrow, why don't we say effective Wednesday?
Okay.
Either the board delegates me the authority to do that or it takes action, but I didn't want to do this without the board's awareness.
So we need a motion to approve that or to delegate that authority to you?
I believe that your general manager has the authority, so this would be your opportunity to deprive them, deprive them of that.
I'd like to be able to count on the general manager handling these kind of rush jobs and, you know, access to the public, access to service.
So basically you need a consensus that we depend on you. Any comments from the other board members? Any comments from?
Yeah, yeah, how long are we talking about?
We're talking about the authority to not accept permits over the counter starting Wednesday.
Yeah, so.
I understand that, how long are we going to shut the window down?
We, well. Yeah, so for right now, it's two, for right now, it's two weeks if it's left to us solely to our own volition. However, the six Bay Area counties and Santa Cruz County have recently declared a shelter in place order. And I believe the board of supervisors is considering it. And even if they don't pass it tomorrow, if cases pick up, they will probably revisit it again. So if there's ever a shelter in place order by the county health officer, it won't matter. It will be, it will remain closed.
Until that's.
Until that's lifted.
Okay, and, and one more question, one more, one more comment. Please put that out and every information that we can, you know, Facebook, the internet, everything that, you know, we check that.
Yep.
But, but electronic submissions will still be available? Okay, yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Director Potter?
Hey, Jay, Jay. So, so the city of Carmel, on last Friday, went through the same format that we're talking about right now. We are going to continue to process permits all through the internet, all on email. And I've gone through the system pretty aggressively, being so inclined, knowing what this service was going to look like. I'm pretty confident that this is going to work. We will still continue to physical onsite, touch it if needed, but all of the other applications, we're geared up. We already have in place to go ahead and do that through email. And so if we're not, our window is closed, but the city's still operating, so you can't go to the counter, but you can still get the service as much as you were used to, you just can't get in place, in, in, in time person contact. So I, I'm, I'm pretty supportive of this way of playing, I'm not, if you guys blow on, I'm not that internet savvy myself. But, but I do, I do believe that this is going to work well. And if we'll continue to allow Carmel to operate, it's going to be flat, it's going to be kind of, that's going to be short on the high.
Great, well, thank you. So I think the consensus is the general manager has the authority to proceed.
Thank you. And so the last item is.
If I could, if I could comment, Director Byrne?
Yes.
I think that it's important that we don't leave it to the stretch of the general manager to interpret UC guidance or the state health officer's guidance on what to do or the county health officer's guidance. I think it's important for the board to indicate to the general manager, if, if it's the intent of the board to follow the directions and the specifications of any directive from the county, state, or federal level as related to this.
to this.
I would think that was the general intention.
So if I might answer just to that question, what is your concern then? You're afraid that it's going to, like, interpret differently than the law, does it come to be? I mean, if you look at what happened to Anderson today, they said there was a mandate on six counties in the Bay Area to go ahead with, it's disputable. And it actually says that, while it's a advisory, that the fact of matter is that they will be able to go ahead and force, but on a punitive basis, for people who just pay the order, I don't see it worth this, and I think that they could be all, if it hasn't to. I mean, I think the law, the rules, the rules, I don't see safety in it, or in the case that, why don't we just go ahead with something?
Well, all I can say, Director Potter, is that for this evening's meeting, CDC guidance came out about not having gathered more than 10 people, and the general manager, the general manager and the council for the district interpreted on their own how to interpret that, and allowed the public to attend as both Board members and put their lives at risk. So that was, that is my concern in making the statements I'm making.
I think we have the...
Thank you, everybody. I think we're a little bit long on the action.
Madam Chair?
But don't have a closed session together.
Board members, we have a statement by our attorney.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, since I was called out by reference to that, that was not my recommendation. What my statement was, that the plan in place was going to be compliant. We had the ability to use the anteroom here at the boardroom, and we have the ability to open the doors, and we have the ability to count the number of people that are here to make sure that we are compliant with those rules. That was our intention. I think that's what we did. We have not put anyone at risk. We have complied with those rules. And my statement to Mr. Hoffman and to Mr. Edwards was that we were planning to abide by those rules, and I think we did.
I would agree that...
And I just, I applaud that email, and I agree with what the statement in that email, Mr. Loreo, I think that is reasonable. That was my comfort, if we're going ahead and repeat that, we, our authority is correct, and there would be probability of things whatsoever.
Well, and I believe that generally, our general manager and our attorney are the people that can interpret what the rules and regulations are, and I think they have complied with those. I think this is, generally, the Board is, has a consensus to move forward with the plan in place. So we're going to adjourn to a closed session.
And this should go relatively quickly, once the room has cleared. Thank you, public.
Goodbye, public.
Yeah, nice to see you, public. Bye.